Okay, not present. Nathaniel Wa. And then we have Chair Brian Wilson of the Board who is executive also in attendance. So we will go directly to public comment. Do we have anyone sign for public comment?
We do not at this time.
Thank you, Luann.
And Chair Rogers, I believe we have a quorum, sir.
Okay, thank you for confirming, Luann. And then Committee action to accept proposed agenda. You have a second?
Aye.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, agenda is passed. We will go to new business and we will turn it over to our CFO Floresto to give us a presentation of our financials and internal control review. And this is for information only.
All right, thank you Chair Rogers. I'm still getting used to switching between platforms too. And there's a lot of noise going on in the media about the economy. So this seemed like a good time to give the committee an update since we're halfway through the fiscal year. And I'll dive right in with the consolidated sales tax, the CTX. This has been reiterated in many of the financial services reports over the last few months, but I thought it was worth going over the prior year consolidated sales tax because it was an unusual year. Especially because we collected the most CTX the district has ever collected in that fiscal year. So starting at the very top, you can see that in July, there was an increase in that month from the previous year of 30%. And that may be understandable considering that fiscal year 2021 was the height of the pandemic. And as the economy more fully reopened, we saw what we called revenge travel and a lot of large increases during fiscal year 2022. And that continued in August, September, October, where we were averaging well over 20% increases every month in CTX. And it did start to taper off towards the end of that fiscal year from March, April, May, June, where it got closer to 10% on average. And that's understandable too, given that there were more worries about high inflation and a possible recession at that point. But we still ended up collecting $29 million, which was well over the amount budgeted by the district and by the state of Nevada who calculates a forecast for that number two. But going into fiscal year 2023, the current budget year, you'll see that the trend going down continues in July with a negative 3%, which is a relatively small percent, but flattens out in August at zero, then starts to increase again, starting in September, where we have a 20% increase in that month from the previous year. And if you go back to September of 2022, we saw a 22% increase there. So another 20% increase in September of this fiscal year is pretty dramatic. And it's all over the place. You can see in October, the increase is only 8% and then 5% in November, which is the most recent CTX collection we have. But overall, we're averaging a 6% increase compared to the prior year for this same time period. And again, coming off a record year, that's a positive indicator for us. The remainder of the fiscal year is still open and there's a lot of uncertainty in the economy, even here in Southern Nevada. But I thought it was worth, again, reemphasizing that we're in a good position as of now. Even if this trend were to flatten off more or even decrease, we appear to be in a position to at least collect the amount of CTX we did in the previous year. And just going forward, it seems as though, despite, again, the noise that we're hearing in the media, that Las Vegas is a little different. Again, it's always risky to consider us special, but we do know that there is still low unemployment, especially across the nation. But even in Nevada, where our Las Vegas Clark County, where we're looking at about a 5% unemployment rate, which is still pretty low. And our service industry is really driven by, you know, visitors, you know, we're in the business of hospitality in Southern Nevada. So that actually, you know, lends credence to the idea that we're a little different in that although inflation is shifting consumer spending from goods, it's moving to services and we provide one of the most popular services in the country. So along with being a service-based, you know, economy and still having over one job opening for every unemployed person in Las Vegas, it really bodes well as far as our future prospects and CTX, which is our most volatile, you know, variable when preparing the budget. And it's looking fairly positive so far. The budget is $30 million for this fiscal year. We're currently on track, if nothing dramatic changes, between now and June 30th to reach that $30 million number. And I was hoping to have the new 2024 budget number for the committee. That's a number we usually get from the state of Nevada around this time every year, but that number also appears to be unready at this point. So it just goes to show that calculating the consolidated sales tax from year to year is more difficult than it appears at first blush.
Floresto?
Yes.
Could you, I want to ask a question.
Mm-hmm.
On the CTX slide, I know that our FY '22 actual was 29.1 million. Could you just, for our recall, share what the forecasted FY '22 amount was?
It was pretty close to the 24 million we actually collected the year before. Give me a second here.
So just, I mean, just reemphasizing that for FY '22, we had a net positive of, I don't know, three or four, three to four million dollars, right?
Yes, the budget for fiscal year.
For CTX collected.
Yes, the CTX budget that we expected in 2022 was $23.4 million. And so it was actually closer to 5 million. We collected more in 2021 than we did in 2000, the budget amount 2022, because the assumption was that the consolidated sales tax would continue trending down because we were coming out of the pandemic. The $23.4 million we budgeted for fiscal year '22 is an amount that was projected by the state of Nevada. We traditionally go with the Department of Taxation's estimate. And you can see that was fairly low in 2022, which was an unusual year. But we were slightly more optimistic in fiscal year 2023 by budgeting $30 million. The state's projection was approximately $28 million. And that's after us collecting $29 million in 2022. So again, we are being a little more optimistic and it turns out so far, we're on track to reach that $30 million number. Although there is a lot of concerns, you know, in the economy at this point, but which is also why I wanted to give this committee an update on where we stood and how we're looking at the economic indicators right now.
Thank you.
Going on to property taxes, where exactly where we expect to be in terms of property tax collections. In fiscal year 2022, at this time of year, we collected 29 million. And as of December of 2022, which is our current fiscal year '23, we've collected $31.8 million. That's a 9% increase, which is close to the 11% budgeted amount that we have for the entire fiscal year. But the revenue collections do vary month to month, so it's not a smooth distribution by month. But this tells us that we are on track to collect the entire budget amount for fiscal year '23, and that amount is $59.2 million for the current fiscal year. And I want to just touch on this area a little bit more because again, the discussion related to the housing market has been, you know, there's two camps. And the bigger camp seems to believe that there's a correction in store for everyone across the country. It may be a large correction, but again, no one is calling a housing crash at this point. It's definitely different from what we saw during the financial crisis. So I just wanted to point that out and also that assessed valuations, which drives our property tax revenue collections, could go up or down in the upcoming fiscal year. But we always can rely on the fact that we've got these tax caps that limit the amount of revenues we can collect anyway. So even if the assessed valuation does go down, if it doesn't go down to a certain level, we're likely to still max out the amount of property tax revenues we're able to collect. If we have a cap of 3% for residential properties and 8% for commercial properties. So that's artificially holding down our property tax revenues. So, so as I mentioned, even with a decrease in assessed valuation, it's very possible we max out those revenue collections in the upcoming year. And the concern about the housing market isn't considering the commercial, you know, real estate market and a chunk of the district's property tax revenues is based on commercial real estate as well. And we know that there's some billion dollar project on the horizon that should help increase the district's revenue going forward also. So moving on to expenditures, here we have the fiscal year 2022 expenditures compared to the current year. And there is a larger increase from this year to last. And as I mentioned with the property tax revenue collections, expenditures follow the same path in that there's not a smooth distribution throughout the year. For example, here, we've front-loaded some of the expenditures as of December. An example would be library materials expenditures, where as of right now, we spent about $6.9 million out of the 11 or 12 million budget. Whereas last year, we may have spent, we did spend slightly less. So there is about a $3 million difference between 2002 and 2023. But we are on track to stay within budget for the entire fiscal year. And in fact, we're currently projecting about a $6 million savings overall for fiscal year 2023 compared to the budget. What I did know.
And Floresto?
Yes.
Within, within the sort of major budget categories, are we also trending to, are we trending to be in the red in any itemized budget categories within the overall budget?
The major categories are personnel costs, salaries and benefits, services and supplies, and library material purchases, and we should be saving in all three of those categories. Library materials, that budget represents 15% of the total budget and we usually spend the majority of that, but we also usually save slightly compared to the budget. But personnel costs and services and supplies both look like we're going to save approximately $3 million in each of those categories. But we're not on track to go over budget in any major category or line item.
Thank you.
And I was just gonna quickly cover the bullet points here that explains why the expenditures so far might be slightly higher. We did have more vacancies in fiscal year 2022 and less vacancies in the current year as we're fully reopening and filling positions as needed as operation grows. And I wanted to also touch on the upcoming budget year, fiscal year 2024. Human Resources is currently working with the Teamsters Local 14 to prepare a new collective bargaining agreement, which expires, the current CBA expires on June 30th, and a new one needs to be in place by July 1st. We haven't gotten to the economics discussion of that new CBA yet, but we are crunching the numbers here in financial services. And there are some factors that are going to be affecting personnel costs in the upcoming year. One of them is an increase in the public employee retirement system contribution rate. The district contributes 100% of that cost for employees and that rate is increasing in the upcoming fiscal year. So that will cost the district an additional 2% of the increased contributions. That is required to be offset against the cost of living adjustment that employees get each July 1st. So for example, if the COLA was 3% beginning on July 1st, it would have to be reduced by 2%, which would leave a net 1% cost of living adjustment for employees. And that's not considering the inflation rate, which is still, you know, rather high. So these are factors we're considering in, you know, figuring out what our expenditures will be or what can we can afford considering all the other needs of the operation and capital projects, which we're going to get to in a second. But this is all more reason why it's important for us to really get a good idea of what the revenues for the upcoming year will be. I talked about the consolidated sales tax and we're hoping that that's consistent, but really, we're, we'll have to see how the year plays out, see what the state projects there. And for property taxes, that's traditionally been reliable, but we won't get property tax revenue projections until the middle of March. And that'll be in time to prepare the tentative budget. And Luann will be reaching out to all of you soon to schedule a committee meeting to review the tentative budget, which is due to the Department of Taxation on April 15th. The next regular board meeting is actually on April 20th. So we'd like to schedule that with all of the trustees here in the Finance and Auto Committee meeting soon. But in the meantime, we're also updating our expenditures for the services and supplies and other categories. We won't know exactly where we will be with any increases in personnel costs until we get later into negotiation talks for this, the collective bargaining agreement. But again, that's something we can discuss during the April Finance and Auto Committee meeting. So here's the expenditures for the capital projects fund so far. And you can see, we haven't spent much of the $11.7 million budget for this current fiscal year. And that's again, because these expenditures are staggered throughout the year. For example, building maintenance and repair projects, most of those expenditures are, have been scheduled for the latter half of the current fiscal year. Technology replacement upgrades have been the majority of the expenses of $2 million so far. And a large piece of the $11.7 million budget is for construction of the new West Las Vegas library. That's still in progress. I'm working with General Services Director John Vino on the construction budget there. But we are unlikely to spend the entire $4 million, if even most of it, by fiscal year 2023 end. But any amount not spent will just be carried forward into the next fiscal year and we'll budget accordingly for the expenditures we expect in that fiscal year and the fiscal year after that. But I just wanted to highlight this area to show that we still have the funds available to complete that project. The overarching question though, is what that project will actually cost. Again, Director Vino had an estimate, you know, going through, you know, the current period. However, with inflation and supply chain, you know, questions still looming. inflation and supply chain, you know, questions still looming out there, that number could change. Director Vino is working on that now. But on the Financial Services side, we're preparing the budget to ensure that we can complete the West Las Vegas project along with any other projects that are, that we're planning down the road. Here, I also wanted to mention the New Markets Tax Credit Program. That came up as a topic during the last regular board meeting, and I just wanted to mention that we do have our consultants, our facilitators for the New Markets Program, and our attorneys that will be attending the April Board Meeting on the twentieth. And so they'll be able to answer many of the trustees' questions, and we'll go over the New Markets Program in general. And just for, you know, this discussion, you know, I'll briefly, you know, just point out that the New Markets Tax Credit is a federal program that provides subsidies for projects happening in disadvantaged communities. So the West Las Vegas project qualifies, and we are seeking new markets funding, just like we did for the East Las Vegas Library and the Mesquite Library Campus. But the, our consultants and attorneys will be available to provide more information on that program and to answer any questions that I mentioned next month.
Floresto, do you have there been any conversations at a high level in terms of what amount of funds might materialize from the new market credit, new market tax credit?
Yes. Traditionally, the benefit of the New Markets Program contributes about twenty percent um of the cost that's been allocated. An allocation means uh the amount of money that one of our partners uh contributes to the project. So hypothetically, if the West Las Vegas project costs thirty million dollars, we may be able to receive about twenty million dollars in allocation, and that's based on our partners um funding and how much they have to distribute among projects they are interested in. So of that twenty million dollars, up to twenty percent of that could generate a benefit to the district. So that would be approximately four million dollars on twenty million dollars of allocation. So we're hoping, yeah, we're hoping to achieve close to that twenty percent. It's likely to be somewhere about closer to seventeen, eighteen percent, but it's possible we get twenty percent, and that'll contribute greatly to the cost of that project, especially since, as I mentioned, you know, the the total cost is really changing, you know, as as we go along. But there's also a memo that we included in the Financial Services Report that provides a little more information on a new markets program for trustees that want to review that for the March meeting, but a lot more detail will be provided in the April meeting.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Either Floresto for Floresto or John Vino, have we reached the point where we have identified or we know um any, you know, as you, you know, of course, as you mentioned of the play shed and the cost of materials and things? Have we identified what materials are the most, I guess, volatile in terms of um in terms of price increases and have we reached the point where we know what those are or what materials we'll need? And actually begin purchasing, pre-purchasing uh construction materials, or is that still kind of too far down the road? And I don't know if that's Floresto or John. I see John Vino somewhere on here, but um kind of where we are with that, or what's the philosophy uh behind kind of cushioning for those costs?
I I can answer that if if everyone can hear me.
Yes.
Yeah, so when the board in January approved our our approval, they approved us to move to design development. That is one of the key features of this phase of the development. So core construction or C M R for this project is actively pursuing a constructibility review of the project. Remember, we're only at thirty percent design of the actual building at this point, so a lot of it is um, you know, why they call it schematic design. We are identifying it. It's it's um, some of the items that um we're looking to purchase in advance would be, you know, the air conditioning systems. The M C C or the electrical components could be a year out. Um there's certain cabling. So yes, we're doing exactly what you're asking. We're identifying those items. Um it does kind of require us to work out a sequence. Um and it certainly will impact our our working budget, but uh we're working through that. Uh it'll be, we're entering a reconciliation phase where um we had, Core provides a budget for where we are and as well as the architect. Um we have meetings over the next thirty to sixty days where we try to better understand the budget and uh um, you know, where where we want to be for this project. And then we work work forward from there. So um you know, I I think it's ongoing, you know, so, but your answer is yes, we're actively working on exactly what you're talking about. If we don't buy these items in in advance, what you see in a construction project now is we could break ground and have to really be put on hold for up to five months until the equipment starts arriving, and that's what we're trying to to um avoid. So I hope that answers the question appropriately.
Yep, thank you, John.
Thanks, John. And yeah, that just highlights the importance of the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. We have prepared pretty well ahead of time to fund at least the new Westside Project. But again, as Director Vino mentioned, there is a lot of moving parts here, and you know, Financial Services and General Services is working closely together to ensure funding at least for that project and maintaining reserves for the critical programs that we always talk about. And it really starts in the general fund. This is where, again, it's another, every year is important with closely managing the budget, but with a new collective bargaining agreement in play, you know, rising costs really across the board for our construction projects and our general operations is really going to be something we'll have to, you know, monitor very closely this year. And I wanted to finish with just an update on our internal control reviews. We have paused on some of our, you know, efforts here. We do have ongoing processes that you can see here from fixed asset inventory observations, observations at cash handling and library branches. These are visits that we make to library branches throughout the year, and between preparing and finishing the audit, you're going through the holidays, and now working on the budget preparation cycle, you know, we have paused that uh number of visits, but we'll resume shortly, and we will get back on track with the new division meetings that we mentioned. We we are very, you know, well aware of what's happening at the library branches. We're comfortable with the controls in place there. But we have, are continuing to schedule meetings with the administrative team directors to look at the departments, to find where we can add more efficiencies, uh improve processes, and mitigate any risks if they exist. So far, we have met with community engagement, the programming and venues services department, you know, again, manages our our venues and facilities, uh usage by, you know, customers of the library. And we have been able to put together a program and guidelines that are going to streamline services there, and really, again, maintain internal controls, the checks and balances that I mentioned. That'll be continuing throughout the rest of the fiscal year and in future years. And I don't have any formal reports to present to the Audit Committee or the Board at this time, but those will be forthcoming soon.
And then Floresto, for your planned internal control review, are you on schedule to still meet that planned scope of reviews or not?
Yes, all of the traditional reviews uh that you see here on this slide, we are on track to complete those by end of fiscal year. And at the same time, we are working to complete additional reviews. As I mentioned, we completed a program with programming and venues, but we're gonna move down the line through all of the other departments after discussions with the admin team directors. And we should be able to complete another department or two by this fiscal year. And we'll schedule these routinely and give the Finance and Audit Committee updates as we go along.
All right. Thus far, any concerns?
No, not thus far. Uh the branches and departments are well aware of their, you know, their needs and their processes, and we've been in discussions uh as far as internal controls goes uh for many years. Uh we're just formalizing that more now, and it's really a collaboration between Financial Services and the other departments to really look for efficiencies and improvements. As far as any irregularities in internal controls, Financial Services has always kept a close eye on that and hasn't had any concerns. And our independent auditors also, you know, takes a look at our many different processes and haven't had any concerns themselves. And um as we're talking about our independent auditors, I just wanted to mention also to the committee that in March, we are requesting approval to designate Hinton Burdick as our auditors again. Last year was their first year auditing the district, and we really appreciated having the fresh eyes, and it was nice to hear that they were satisfied not with just our financial statements, our reporting and presentation of the financials, but with the overall processes that are happening throughout the district, these internal controls that we're discussing. So between Financial Services reviews and our independent auditors, we're comfortable overall with what you were aware of throughout the district and their processes, but we'll continue meeting with departments and performing our reviews in order to ensure that that continues.
And and it may have escaped me, but could you remind me and the and the committee members, what's the timeline on when the external auditor completes its review and when that's presented to the, in the setting?
We traditionally start our audit after Labor Day, so the beginning of the September month, the auditors, you know, hit the field there here in person and working remotely to perform the audit. That traditionally takes two to four weeks uh as far as the bulk of the work there. So by October, we're wrapping up the financial statements and tying up any loose ends. And the audit is presented to the board for acceptance in November, the November Board Meeting.
Thank you.
And there will be a Finance and Audit Committee meeting in November, just like last year. We'll present the results to the committee. And going back to other Finance and Audit Committee meetings, I think I've touched on all of them. We will have another Finance and Audit Committee meeting in April to discuss the tentative budget. That's for discussion only. The final budget will be presented to the board at the budget hearing in May. And we are planning on meeting with the Finance and Audit Committee again sometime this summer to discuss where we stand at that point. And we may actually send or schedule a meeting earlier to discuss the economics of the upcoming collective bargaining agreement discussions.
Thank you. Any any additional questions for Floresto?
Yes, Floresto, I know you mentioned that the Department of Taxation usually gives their projections to you at this point. Have they indicated what the reason for the delay is and um you know, and has that delay caused any issues in your department, or um are they, we just don't know until we know, kind of thing?
I have reached out to the Department of Taxation. I haven't received a response yet, but this isn't completely unusual in that the Department of Taxation is usually timely, but there are years, especially over the last couple of years with the pandemic and the volatile sales tax revenues, uh where the department has been providing some information later. It's not normally a burden on us or any other agencies. The number we get by this time of year is the C T X projection. It would be helpful to have that just as a starting point, so we can estimate our total revenues in order to complete our budgeting process, but it's not slowing us down, you know, at this point. I'm sure the Department of Taxation will catch up at some point, so we'll be able to complete our work here in order to present the tentative budget to this committee in April. Uh maybe a a larger concern would be the property tax revenue projections that we traditionally get in mid-March. There have been unusual years, and I wouldn't be surprised if this was one of them, where we may get those projections a little later than we have in the past. That number is scheduled to be distributed for, to local governments on March fifteenth. But we do have until later in March to wrap up the budget, so ideally, we would get the property tax projections mid-March, so we're well prepared. But if it is slightly later, uh we're still not too concerned about preparing the budget in order to present to the committee.
Thank you, Floresto, and and of course, great job to you and your team.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I echo um committee members' Nathaniel Waugh's comment concerning your report and and all the work from from you and your team. Always uh high-quality and informative and answered all our questions clearly, so we appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. All right.
Any anything else on the new business from anyone, any of the committee members? All right, hearing now, we, Luanna, do we have anyone scheduled for signing in for a public comment at this time?
There is no public comment at this time.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for taking time from your schedule to join us today. And we will, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So.
All right, we are officially adjourned. Everyone have a great rest of your day.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.